I'm just like, I like a lot of space. I have to have things organized a certain way anyway.
All right, everyone, we're gonna go ahead and call the planning commission meeting to order. If you could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Crystal, if you'd be so kind to help with the roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Aker.
Here.
Commissioner Cahalan.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Cranky.
Here.
Commissioner Merrick.
Here.
Commissioner Jahinsky.
Here.
Commissioner Hausman.
Here.
Mayor Atwell.
Present.
Amy Barrows.
Here.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, discussion of possible action on the following minutes.
One correction, I pointed it out already to the clerk, my name was misspelled.
Thank you for pointing that out. Would you like to make a motion with that correction?
I'll make a motion to, with the correction, to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention passes. Okay, citizens' comments on consent agenda items only. Is there anyone that would like to make citizens' comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. So that means all, one, two, three, four, five folks on the consent agenda, you've been approved, you're free to leave, or you can stay to the end of the meeting and say you didn't hear your name right off, and when will you be next? Is there anybody that's unsure if they're on the consent agenda? Now just raise your hand, we'll let you know. Okay, what company are you with?
Yep.
You were approved.
Hearing Life, Bliss Boutique, Herbal Key Apothecary, Lake &amp; Pine, and Chase Bank.
All approved. Okay. You covered? All righty. Okay, we're gonna move on to number seven. Public hearings, we have none. Number eight, citizens' comments on items other than the consent agenda. Is there any citizens' comments on any topic? Any citizens' comments on any topic? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. We'll go to nine, unfinished business, 9A DLC 0733-994-001, DLC 0733-994, and DLC 0733-995, 3185 Hill Road. Owner Divine Redeemer Lutheran Church, applicant Janet Barr. Applicant is requesting business plan of operation approval for Divine Redeemer Early Childhood Development Center. Is the applicant here? Come on up. Amy, wanna give us a brief overview, please?
Sure, so we did discuss this matter at last month's meeting. I believe we did go through the entire report, but you did table the item because the applicants were not here. There was some discussion about the hours of operation. They are proposing to be open from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and there's just concern that maybe they would wanna extend those hours. You know, even if it's periodically, they might have open hours on the weekends or evenings based on activities. The applicant did respond to me and they do not intend on having hours that expand beyond what was originally proposed. Do you have anything to add, Adam?
Can you give us your name and address, Adam?
Adam Wolf, Whitewater, Wisconsin.
Any other questions?
Better address? Okay. Yeah, so we often ask people to really think about what activities they might be having, and to think of the worst-case scenario on hours, because if you stick with the 6:00 p.m., if you wanna have a kid's recital, or conf, you know, or play, or something that's after those hours, technically you'd be in violation of the rules, and we don't wanna see you violate the rules. We don't wanna get a complaint that says we have to come in and force a 6:00 p.m. when you were doing something till 8:00 p.m. So we ask the question, in what we hope is your own best interest, that if maybe you had something on Saturday, you're not allowed to have things on Saturday if we go ahead and prove it the way you've submitted it.
And is that, I did speak to the administration of the school and the church, and they seem pretty set on this. If it wouldn't cause any issues, I would like to, so... And I did not see her BPO that she submitted, because when it goes to the website, it just uploads. So...
Amy can go over it for you again.
Yeah, she did submit 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and I did send her a message after the meeting and asked her if she had any interest in expanding the hours for, you know, whatever circumstances they would propose, and she did not want to modify those hours.
So we wouldn't even, so they would not be able to do like a men's prayer group?
Nothing.
Could we, uh...
You can use the church, if the church has...
Yeah, but you can't use this facility.
Under the current hours.
Yeah, they're all so allowed to amend this if they want to do in the future.
And you can amend it, but we just try to have this conversation upfront, right? Rather than end up in some kinda situation neither one of us would wanna be in.
So may we get on next month's agenda with a revision, just to make sure...
Well, do you know, do you know, what, I mean, 9:00 p.m., 10:00 p.m.?
Proposed sometimes.
Do you have any idea? Adam, Adam's the contractor, just so that you know.
I wouldn't anticipate anything going past 9:00 p.m. at night, and that would be on a...
Great, if you can modify it to 9:00, how about the weekend? Eight to six? Eight to nine?
Eight to nine would be fantastic if that's permissible.
Sure, it's pretty much wide open unless we think it's gonna cause some problem with the neighbors or something odd, but, and that would be up to the planning commissioners to decide.
And I think that would be on an extremely limited basis.
Yeah.
And the hours, yeah, you're not held to the hours, so if you're within them, they're fine.
Nothing happened. So what do you have written down there, Amy?
I believe till 9:00, well, so it would be 7:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Weekends, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
That would be wonderful.
Saturday and Sunday.
I'll make a motion to approve the business plan of operation as presented for Divine Redeemer Lutheran Church, amending the proposed business plan of operation hours to 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday.
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Looks like construction's going well. Lots of activity. It has been. Okay, we'll move on to number 10, new business, DLC 0740-995, 1650 Blue Spruce Lane. Owner Jeffrey and Stu Stark. Applicant, Allright Homes and Remodeling. Applicant is requesting approval to remodel a boathouse. If you could give us your name and address.
Sure, my name... My name is Randy Miller. 6580 North Fortia Street, Milwaukee, 53209.
Thank you very much. Amy, if you could give us an overview?
Okay, so this property's on the northeast shore of Lake Naga Wica, in the area, it's off of Blue Spruce Lane, where there's quite a bit of wetland floodplain right along the shoreline, and some cattails right at the shore. So they do have an existing boathouse. The boathouse is located in the floodplain, and it's below the ordinary high water mark, so it is classified as a wet boathouse. But because it's existing, it is a legal non-conforming structure, and then, and they can legally repair, remodel, and renovate the structure. And then all modifications to any boathouse do require a Lake Welfare Committee and Plan Commission approval, which is why they're here today. They are limiting their improvements to reshingling, re-siding, and then also replacing a steel door. Not the overhead door, but the man door on the side of the building. They're remodeling the house right now, so the shingles and siding will match the house. And I believe the applicant does have a live color board on the, over by the chairs, if you wanna take a look at it. They did also submit some nice pictures that are included in the packet. Because it is a wet boathouse, it does require a DNR certification. In my report, it does say that that was granted. However, they are still, it's been submitted and it's being processed. I believe it's a pretty automatic approval, but they are, it got somehow stuck in their system, and they are still waiting for their formal approval. So one of the conditions in here already is that we need to have that written documentation of approval before I would release the certification of compliance to Scott to issue the building permit for them to continue on with the work. And then there is, if you look in the pictures in the packet, there's a deck on the shore. They're not allowed to do any work to that deck without getting permits, and that would also require a DNR permit as well. So Lake Welfare Committee did recommend approval for the improvements that are being proposed subject to that boathouse certification being granted by the DNR, and then also requested that the applicant install a downward-facing light that encourages a dark sky environment on the lakeside, which the applicant did agree to at the meeting. So my recommendation is written to match the Lake Welfare's recommendation.
I'll add, Lake Welfare was unanimous.
Well, in that case, I'll make a motion to approve proposed boathouse improvements as presented, subject to the issuance of a building permit from the building inspector and documentation being submitted that the boathouse certification has been granted by the DNR, and also exterior lighting shall be downward-facing to encourage a dark sky environment.
I'll second.
I have to make a move on something.
Isn't that a conflict of interest or something? That's like double voting, you can't double vote.
Crystal picked you, Mike. All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, T, or number 10B, DLC 0795-982-002, 41 West Cedar Valley Road, and DLC 0795-982-003, 101 Cedar Valley Road. Owner, Cedar Valley Road Farm LLC, applicant Carrie Karpinski. Applicant is requesting approval of a certified survey map to split two existing lots into three lots. Is the applicant here? Come on up, please. If you could push the button there and then just give us your name and address.
Carrie Karpinski, 41 West Cedar Valley Road, Delafield.
Thank you, and Amy, if you could give us an overview?
Sure, so this property's on the west side of Cushing Park Road and just north of Cedar Valley Road. The applicant currently owns two lots. So on the screen, you can see, the blue lot includes the entire area. The area in yellow is the second lot, if that makes sense. So one is a upside-down L, and then the yellow lot. The bigger lot's 11 acres, the smaller lot is five acres in size. If you look at the aerial photo, you can see there's a very large barn on the 11-acre property. They did have a conditional, excuse me, a conditional use for a commercial stable. They did terminate that conditional use, and they have actually removed that barn from the property, so it's no longer there. Their daughter owns the property to the west, and so...
She does not own it.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
I'm sorry, they own it, the daughter lives on the property to the west. So what they're proposing to do is move the east lot, the west lot line of the east lot a little bit further west to make that western lot a tad bit bigger. The other direction, the western lot, a little bit further east to make the west lot a little bit bigger. And then they'll be creating a third lot on that northern field, which will have frontage off of Cushing Park Road. So the engineering department did look at that. Let me just go to the certified survey map. So they looked at access to Lot 2, that'll be the new lot to the north. And they would like to have the access point off of Cushing Park Road limited to the north half of it. So the surveyor's also asking for a, an access restriction along Cushing Park Road for all of Lot 3, so that no access or access restriction will extend to the, through the southern half of that northern lot. So they will be limited in where they can put their driveway. And then they have a proposed access point on Lot 3, which the surveying and engineering department is okay with. Right now, the driveway for Lot 3 is actually on the western lot. They have a shared driveway, and that's why you see the access easement currently. We're gonna have them remove that access easement, it's no longer needed. Whenever they do decide to sell Lot 3, they will install a driveway, and it will have its own driveway. So right now, because they own both lots, they really don't need an access easement, and the way it's drawn on here won't make sense anyway. And then they'll also have a restriction with no access allowed off of John Street. Other than that, they do comply with the zoning district as proposed. It's zoned RE1, which requires a one-acre lot size, that's the land use plan as well. However, all of the lots do have to be five acres because it's served by a private septic. These three lots would be served by a private septic system. The two lots that have houses on them now already are served by a private septic system. So I have a few comments, and then the surveyor also submitted his letter, which is included in the packet. I went over the bigger ones that have to be modified on the actual CSM before we would send it to common council for review and approval. I also have in my report that they need to have a soil test on, on Lot 2 to make sure that it's suitable for a septic system. The applicants would prefer, because they really don't have the intention of building on that lot anytime in the near future, it's just that they may sell Lot 3, and they wanna maintain the ownership of the rest of the acreage, that the city put a note on there instead that would say, and I have it written here, Lot 2 is not buildable until such time soil testing is conducted and Waukesha County determines that the lot is suitable for the installation of a private sewage system. So it's on them. They wouldn't be able to build on that lot until they do the soil test. After looking at it, there are really good soils out here. I believe you have conventional septic systems on both of the lots. I don't imagine that they will have any problem with it. And then the surveyor and engineer also recommended that Cushing Park Road be... Normally, it would be a 66-foot-wide road instead of a 60-foot road, because it's a rural cross-section. However, this lot was created by a certified survey map in the first place, and it was dedicated at 60 feet wide, and they built their house based on that. So if the city requires the three-foot dedication, they'll have a non-conforming structure, and it's really not a critical width. There's, if you go up and down Cushing Park, there's variable width. Some are actually 50 feet from the center line, some are 30, and some are 33. So they recommended to resolve that issue, that instead they just have a three-foot easement that the city benefits from for any kind of roadwork that would, if any kind of ditching or roadwork would need to be done, they would have access to three feet. The physical road would, is not anticipated to ever be located in that. So that is something that I would ask for you to decide on, and that, and I did talk to the surveyor and engineer and actually administrator, and we all thought that was a reasonable approach. That's, again, I think those are the important conditions, but they are all in the report, if you have any questions.
To confirm that, there's a, the intent is to have a deed restriction filed with the county that Lot 3 doesn't have access to Cushing Park Road?
It won't be a deed restriction, it will be a marking on the actual CSM that goes to common council that'll... I don't know if they'll do like a hatching, where it'll say access restricted, and it'll be all along Cushing Park, well, and then the south end of Lot 2, and along John Street. Or they might do a point at a point and say access restricted in this area. Usually, there's some kinda like hatching, but we'll ask for it to be on, on the CSM.
Okay.
And the recommendation is to approve the CSM subject to plan or engineer and survey or comment, so we would make sure all of that is taken care of. And then I would just add that note, because my condition did include the soil test. The note about Lot 2 is not buildable until such time a soil test is conducted and Waukesha County determines that the lot is suitable for the installation of a private sewage system.
As a rule, don't we typically have for creation of a new lot that the lot lines extend perpendicular to the road throughout the lot line? I mean, I understand there's a big lot, but...
So what they did, so it kinda looks like a flag lot, which is a little deceiving.
It's 141 feet.
Yeah, it's not a flag lot, because it meets the width of the lot. And they had, they worked really hard at this, because each lot has to be five acres in size, and that's why they have the shape. But I would say that the way the land division ordinance reads, it's more important that it be regularly shaped, so at straight angles, not a real awkward shape is where it gets awkward. And then if it were narrower than 140 feet, it would be a flag lot, and you do discourage flag lots.
That's where I was going, okay. And then the, until such time that Lot 3 is sold, they're sharing a driveway off of Lot 1, and then if Lot 3 gets sold, then they're compelled to put in a new driveway for that lot?
Yes. So, right now, technically, they don't really need an easement because they own both lots, and they can put a driveway on Lot 3 at any time, but they will, they will separate the driveways when they sell Lot 3. The other, the other option would be they could extend the easement and have a bigger easement. Right now, the easement doesn't make sense because it's, it straddled the old lot line. I can actually go to... If you look, it's hard to see because it's right over where I drew the yellow line. Well, not really. So, the existing driveway that's on the map will now be entirely on Lot 1, and so it won't reach the other lot. So, when I was talking to the owners about it, they actually really don't need that easement because they own both lots, and it's, you actually don't have to give yourself an easement if you're the owner, but they don't intend on keeping it shared that way. And I believe the current owners, they're going to do the construction to fix, to move the driveway, correct, before you sell it?
How recently has there been horses on there? It's been pretty recent, hasn't it?
Yes. It's just during COVID, it was, we shut down.
Oh, okay.
It's sad. I know. The neighbors, the neighbors miss them.
I miss driving by and seeing them.
It's just the night feedings got really tough.
So, I think this is covered, but I'm just going to ask the question, question to be sure. I mean, it's, so it's not, under what you're saying, it's not a possible scenario that Lot, the new Lot 2 could be sold and an easement not have been granted to them, irregardless of who owns it today. Who could own this group or part of this group of lots? What protection is there for Lot 2 that they could, they will absolutely have the right to a driveway?
Oh, Lot 2 is on the, is the north lot?
Yeah.
They will have access off of Cushing Park Road on the north half, at the bottom of the hill.
Okay.
And that, the engineer has reviewed.
Okay. So, where's the easement that's needed then?
The easement is between, right here, it's this 30 by 140-foot access easement already exists on Lot 1 that used to straddle the existing, or does straddle the existing lot line. The lot line's moving, so whenever they sell Lot 3 to another owner, they don't have any rights over that. They won't, if this gets vacated right now, they don't have any rights over that existing driveway, even if they decide not to relocate it. They're going to be forced to build a driveway unless they mutually agree that one can use the other, but there's no agreement, there won't be any formal agreement in place, because they both have access to the road, and they can both have their own driveway.
Don't want one. Lot 3 gets, Lot 2, Lot 3 will have its own driveway on Cushing Park, as it's indicated on the CSM.
Yeah.
And so, Lot 3, if it had it as far as it could go to the driveway, as far as it could go to the west, that's far enough from the intersection that the public works department wouldn't have an issue with that?
I don't think there'd be a problem with it.
Okay.
And I did talk to Mike today. I mean, it's up to you if you want public works to look at it, but he thought it could be staff reviewed, and they were comfortable, they do want it as far to the west as possible. They were comfortable with the way it's drawn.
Yeah, I've been over there. I don't think there'll be any issue with that.
I'll make a recommendation to approve the CSM provided the plan or engineer and surveyor comments are addressed prior to a final CSM being presented to the common council for review and approval.
Do you want to add the condition that Lot 2 is not buildable until such time as, that they can put a note on the CSM that Lot 2 is not buildable until such time soil testing?
Exactly. So, yes, left that off. So, yeah, so, and add that Lot 2 is not buildable until a soil test is conducted and approved.
All right. Crystal, you want to read that back to us just for 100% sure?
Okay, so... So, to recommend approval of the CSM provided the plan, engineering, and survey comments are addressed prior to a final CSM being presented to the common council for review and approval, with condition that Lot 2 is not buildable until such time as a soil test is conducted and approved.
Yeah, and just, I would just use the language that I had provided, because it'll be a note on the CSM exactly. Lot 2 is not buildable until such time as soil testing is conducted, and Waukesha County determines that the lot is suitable for the installation of a private sewage system.
I agree 100%.
Do you want to please? Thank you.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Got a second from Scott? Just going to wait for Crystal to finish typing, so we don't... Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Opposed, abstentions, passes. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry to see the horses go, but I'm glad it all worked out.
Lot 2 is a desirable lot.
Yes, we get postcards all the time.
Yes, I'm sure. You'll get more.
Got a call. Thank you.
All righty, we'll move on to 10C, DLC 078199003, 1605 West 83. Owner, Jag 1605 LLC, applicant Peter Damsgard. On behalf of the Commodore, applicant is requesting permitted signage approval for off-site directional signage to accommodate the Commodore restaurant facility. If you guys can give us your names and address again, please?
Sure. You're on.
You're on. Keith Trafton, W331 South 565, earn way in the town of Delafield.
Peter Damsgard, N58W6181, Columbia Road, Cedarburg, Wisconsin. Wish I had a shorter address.
Great. Amy, you want to give us an overview, please?
Okay. So, I think they're coming to more meetings than long-term applicants, but there, as you know already, they are proposing some off-site signage for the Commodore, and the common council did just recently adopt an ordinance that would approve off-site signage with some modified provisions that do happen to accommodate the signage that they're proposing. So, in the, for tonight's meeting, they are only proposing the sign at the corner of Nagawicka and Highway 83. They're going to come back and propose another sign along Nagawick Avenue.
Nagawicka and Oakwood.
Yeah. Nagawicka and Oakwood, that smaller sign that's on the screen, that they're not proposing that tonight. It's in the right-of-way. They have to go to public works this month for approval to do work in the right-of-way, and then they'll come back to plan commission. So, the larger sign, though, on Highway 83, which is the sign on the left, will be 31.94 square feet. That does comply with the new standards. It is double-sided. It'll be a painted wood look in some kind of a composite material, the HDU, high-density urethane material. It'll be on a seven-foot, eight-inch wood post, and they are proposing internal illumination. There weren't a lot of standards that they put in their application, so they did just drop off some pictures, a few pictures that are being sent down the, down the table here that show kind of what they have in mind. They're proposing some limited landscaping at the base. It is on somebody else's property, so, you know, I think they're trying to be mindful of maintenance, I would assume. And, let's see, anything else? Oh, the sign, it is going to be just outside of the vision corner easement, which you can see on the screen here, outside of the right-of-way and outside of the vision corner easement. The ordinance does require that they meet the road setback requirement for any structure unless plan commission waives it. So, as part of, if you do approve the signage, as part of that approval, you are also waiving the road setback. So, I do, as a suggestion, recommend approval of their proposed sign, subject to that illumination not exceeding more than the 40-foot candles when measured with a stand light meter, held perpendicular to the sign at a distance of 10 inches from the sign. That comes from the code. The waiver, a waiver document has to be drafted and recorded with the Waukesha County Register of Deeds. It's also written into the code. And the applicant is responsible for ensuring the sign is located outside of the road right-of-way and vision corner easement, and they may be required to mark the right-of-way line in order to ensure that. So, I'll talk to them, Scott and I can talk to them to see if there's any benchmark identifiers out in the field, and if they're not, then they might have to get that corner surveyed because they're just outside of it.
So, we've had a number of things that we've talked about subtle lighting on recently. One of them is the clock at the top of 705 Genesee Street, and the other one is the subtly lit entrance sign to the golf course development. There's been a lot of discussion, and I've led quite a bit of it, about wanting lighting to be very subtle. I'm not sure. Maybe you can correct my memory. I guess when I saw it in the packet, I didn't remember us talking about this sign being lit before, and maybe it's just me forgetting that we did. But if you are proposing lighting, I mean, I, planning commission votes, I just give my opinion, right? That, you know, I would be concerned that, I don't, I don't know how bright 10 candles are from 40 feet. I don't view this sign as an advertisement of the Commodore. I view it as a way to help you find it, right? So, I don't know where, I don't know how to measure it, that it would be subtle enough, but in my mind, I need it to be really subtle.
Sure. You know, it's, there is the measurements, right, that follow the technical guidelines. Our reading of the zoning code is that this is really the only way. You allow these wayfinding signs to be lit. You don't allow floodlight, either ground mounted or mounted. So, and you are correct that the purpose is really wayfinding, right? We want people to be able to make that left turn kind of down a residential street. So, the lighting's kind of critical to making sure that, you know, especially at the restaurant in evening hours. One thing that I can say about the lighting in addition to that is it's LED lighting, and if you're familiar with that, there's temperatures, right? It ranges from 2,800 to 4,000 or 5,000K. The higher you get, the more white, bright, kind of, people think more offensive light than the lower on that spectrum you are. We typically put this light, sign lighting in that 3,500 or less category, so kind of on that bottom third or quarter of that scale. So, that would also be the intent here. Keith can speak to this too, but, you know, we want to be part of the community here and don't want this sign to be intrusive to anybody. We just want it to be functional and safe, so that's our goal with the lighting at this point.
Well said.
We allow uplighting, correct? I mean, for...
Ground lighting?
Do we allow ground lighting, not directional?
Not for this particular type of sign.
We would love to ground light if that's an option, but we're not going to...
So, where in the code does allow backlighting?
I'll have to look where, was it in the directional sign section or in...
I believe so, yes.
Because I know that, like, the golf course, St. John's development, that is not so much directional as monument lighting, right?
Those are backlight.
Backlighting as well.
Backlighting, yeah.
It's backlight.
No, but I mean, it's, but it's not a...
It's backlight behind the letter.
I understand, I understand, but I mean, as far as the light itself, it's like a monument, more like, is that the same, is that directional, is that directional lighting?
Yours is a...
If it's...
That's actually sight lighting.
It's entrance signage.
Yeah. Okay.
It might even say entrance slash subdivision sign.
I've read this a few times recently, but they...
Amy, you need your mic on.
If it's on site, you can, you can use ground-mounted lights. If it's off-site, is how I read it.
Amy, you need your mic on. While you're turning that on, quick question. Dan, isn't there a, is it mercury vapor light on the corner there? I mean, there's a light above the intersection. And I don't know if this is a help or hindrance, but it's a...
No, there's a, it's common at all the busy intersections in the city, or typically we energy lights that the city pays for monthly. So, I'm pretty certain there's a light there.
And I, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, the old sign did have spotlights on it.
We talked about that, I think, prior, that the old sign was lit with floodlights.
Right. And that's what I think took for it to be seen, but I, because it can go either way, like, hey, there's a light there already. What do you need a light for? Well, if you can't see the sign...
Well, let's go back to the original purpose of why we wanted the sign. Number one, it's a safety issue, in our opinion. You know, basically, from late October until March, we're primarily a dinner restaurant other than on the weekends and some daytime, but primarily a dinner restaurant. So, it's dark. So, our goal is to achieve a few things. One is create a safe environment for those to see the space, but also, at the same time of class, be very respectful of the Mr. and Mrs. Geeson who are allowing these properties. So, if there's a better way to accomplish it, we're 100% for it. Just our, understand it sounds like that's our single opportunity, path of opportunity, so...
Yeah, so, the code says that directional signs may be reflective or internally illuminated. No floodlights will be permitted.
All right. Is there, is there a time that you think would be reasonable, appropriate to have a timer to shut off at?
Good question.
That's a you call. I mean, like, after 1:00 AM or something.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to think what our hours of operation, I think, are. Realistically, we seat, probably the last person sits typically at 9:00 PM, typically. That's welcome to Wisconsin, right? They don't eat late. So, if I were to gather, I'd say 10 o'clock would be a reasonable end of day, you know, the New Year's Eve, they'll figure it out on New Year's Eve, right? But I would guess, I would gather 10 o'clock would be a reasonable time.
Does that work, like, using a timer? Does that work for you guys?
I'm just the designer, so... I mean, feasibly, we can make a timer work, absolutely. Yeah, there's daylight sensors, either dusk to dawn, or there's a mechanical timer that you can set to hours.
It seems a little early.
He serves the last person.
Then I say 11?
I heard 11.
Sounds like an auction.
St. John's had a...
If it goes off at midnight, is, why is that too late?
That sounds fine.
Midnight's fine.
We're, I think, like, when you're at 2:00 in the morning, it's like, really?
That's true.
Midnight sounds right.
A safety thing, because if you, if people come over the hill and they don't see that sign, and they see it late, and they realize, oh, I gotta jam on the brakes to make this turn.
Or I'm picking somebody up that was at dinner.
They're gonna get plowed up from somebody behind, so I...
Yeah, that's, that's a rationale.
I think there's a safety component of that, for sure.
My midnight would be fine.
I just asked the question.
It does sound more reasonable.
Yeah, it does sound reasonable.
There is a house that people live in on that same property.
Yeah.
That for years put up with a sign with spotlights on it, 24 hours a day. I think it was all night that they were going, so...
And is there a way that the sign lighting can be constructed so that you can dial in the brightness as opposed to, this is it, we can't change it, it's always this bright, or we could bring it down to adjust it so that it would be bright enough to see, you know, so you had the control?
Like a dimmer switch.
Yeah.
You know, I've, I am sure that you can dim these lights. I don't know if I've ever put a dimmer switch on a, on a sign, but not to say that you couldn't. There are LED, I was talking about that temperature. Many of the LED fixtures now have, you can set that temperature...
Yeah.
On, on the fixture itself.
It's like from yellow to blue, right?
Exactly.
But I'm talking about the light output, irregardless of the temperature.
Um, I, I would like to say yes, but I couldn't definitively say that.
Because I know I can dim all the LED lights in my house.
So, I think you can. I just have never actually had to dim a sign before. So, I would venture to say the answer is we can do it. I don't want to make that definitive promise today.
They still have to meet our 10-foot...
I don't know how bright that is. Do you? Can you give me an example of something?
You're gonna have to buy 10.
That if I went and measured it at 40 feet, at 10 looms, that that's it? I can't.
Right at 10 with warm light might look way better than, you know, 2 at bright white, you know?
Oh, yeah.
So...
I would have it a warmer.
You know, and this is, this is tough to be, I mean, you're less than a mile south of a mobile station in the Culvers. So, I mean, and there's... So I mean, and there's storage buildings and other stuff. So we're, we're just trying to control what's on our side of the street and set reasonable precedence for how we have to do this in the future. But, yeah, I, I think midnight with our current lighting standards is good.
With the control that dictates warmness and a dimmer?
It's the bulbs.
Yeah.
The bulbs, they're gonna have to pick the...
Yeah, I'm just saying that they have the control to do it.
If possible.
If possible, yeah.
And then what I would recommend, either way, you do your research for next month's meeting, for the smaller sign might be a bigger deal than this one.
Sure.
Which is also under a mercury vapor light, but okay.
And has floods on it.
Yeah.
And maybe I'll get the light meter between now and then, I'm gonna go around, find one at forty feet that hits the mark.
Pete and I will both bring in twenty candles.
Get a reflective vest for Ken so he doesn't get hit while he's out there in the dark.
Okay, I'll motion to approve the directional signage in the northwest corner of eighty-three and Nagawicka Road East, including a waiver from road setback subject to the conditions listed by our planner in our packet tonight. Do you want me to read them off?
What about the conditions from the planner? I don't think you have to, but turn off at midnight, and what about the dimmer?
Of the turning, with, with the provision that the light is turned off at midnight, I'm gonna leave it, the dimmer out.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stentions?
Thank you for the trust.
Good day.
Thanks, guys, keep up the good work.
Appreciate it.
I right now.
All right, move on to D, DLC zero-seven-nine-three-zero-five-three-zero-zero-one-four-one-seven Genesee Street, owner MMO Investment Properties LLC. Applicant Jacob Meyer. Applicant is requesting, requesting to give a preliminary conceptual project presentation for the construction of a building that would accommodate two golf simulators. Welcome. Can you guys give us your name and address?
Yeah, I'm Jake Meyer, two-four-five Fieldstone Road, Della Field, Wisconsin, five-three-zero-one-eight.
And Jonathan Thompson, N-two-W-two-seven-three-one-eight Lyles Drive, Waukesha, five-three-one-eight-eight.
All right, Amy.
Okay, so this property is on the west side of Genesee Street. It's just east of the Della Field Hotel on the, if you wanna call it like the southern entrance to the Della Field Hotel, they're just north of that. It is zone CBD two. It's the investment firm. Cute, smaller building with parking onsite. They are, so they're here asking for a conceptual review and approval for the golf simulator building. They did provide some elevation schematics of that building. It would have two suites, two areas, two areas, two golf simulators with a bathroom and then like a counter on each side with, with four seats. The building will be about eight-hundred-and-ten square feet, fifteen by fifty-four feet. I think they, they have other options that they can consider. They'll, they will need to have a survey done to make sure that the building does fit on the property and meets all of the setbacks. So with CBD two, they do have to meet setbacks and, setbacks and offsets, and they are subject to floor area ratio. They did submit a site plan on the property, but it, again, it's, it's not necessarily drawn to scale. So for parking purposes, based on the size of the building and the uses they currently have on the property, it's, it seems like they'll need to have nine to ten spaces. We'll have to do that analysis when they come in with a formal application. They have twelve spots out there now. They might lose one to two spots. So I believe they will have enough onsite parking for their investment company and the golf simulators. So the challenging part, perhaps, other than you reviewing the downtown design elements and the architecture and aesthetics of it, would be that entertainment uses are not specifically listed in CBD two as a permitted use. The, the most similar that I could get to was hobby shops, private clubs, and studios, which in parentheses, the code states, music, art, voice, and dance. However, the, the intent section of CBD two does include entertainment uses. So it, it seems as though none of those uses are, are a perfect fit that are specifically listed and that they probably should go through a text amendment for the city to accommodate the entertainment uses which are in the, in the intent. With a use like this, if you get large-scale entertainment uses, would, they could require quite a bit of parking, and you, and you do struggle with parking downtown and especially in the CBD district, so you may want to consider if you specifically call out golf simulators, that it be limited to, to two or four, I don't know what, like, do you just say two or four simulators? Is that how your search reads?
Hitting bay, yeah. A bay or, yes, simulator works too.
To avoid that large-scale operation, you might want to limit the size. So I do recommend if you support, that you provide feedback with the applicants on whether or not you support the use in general, any changes you'd like to see made to the architectural design, and then we can talk about possibly a text amendment and how that should read.
This is really, we don't really have architectural design, do we, tonight?
Yes.
Isn't this, this is just...
We're not voting on anything tonight, but you can comment.
Feedback, I understand, but is it gonna look like that? Or is that just a concept? I thought this was conceptual.
It is conceptual.
It is, but it...
So their, their example is it's gonna look like page seventy-eight.
There you go.
Are these, to me, they appear to be prefabricated, and they come, and they are.
Yeah.
So Scott's not here, I'm assuming those have to be put on a foundation.
Um, I don't know.
I mean...
What can you tell us about the construction of this building?
Yeah, well, they're, the, the company that designs these is a, a company out of Indiana called Nathan Stutman Golf, and they manufacture them down in Kenosha, and they make them a variety of different ways. Some of them are, you know, depending upon, they design them, some to have bathrooms, some not to have bathrooms, some to be single bays. They have the double bay model is the one that we submitted, but, and some of them are on foundations and some of them are just, you know, more, more mobile in nature and, you know, put on...
Like a trailer bed?
Essentially, yeah. I mean, they're, they're not, they're...
Like a mobile home.
Yeah, that's what...
They're parked but not really intended to move.
That's the picture I get of these, like, mobile home trailers, have a skirt around them, and can be moved at any time.
That's, that's, based on initial conversations we've had with the designer and the manufacturer here, they would, you could do slab-on-grade, you don't have to, well, some of this is looking for feedback as well, as if we would have to put in footings and full foundation. But based on conversations with the designer manufacturer, they're, they generally do them with just slab-on-grade and set it, and it is skirted around the edge to, but it could be movable if need be.
So I just wonder what our zoning ordinance of that even allows a temporary building type?
To this point, I've assumed this is stick construction, so...
It's not, though.
It appears to be the case.
I did, we can get that information from Scott. I would say that's more of a building code question, I mean, as, as far as...
We don't allow mobile homes in the city of Della Field. I mean, I don't need to look at the code to find that out, because we have none.
Yeah, but it's not, well, we gotta slow down. It's not, it's, it's not a mobile home, and it's not residential in nature, so you gotta be careful. It's the type of structure for the commercial. You do have full authority downtown to review the architectural design, the type of the structure, so if you don't like it, then that's what I would let the applicants know. But that, I would say your review is more related to, to those elements. Scott can review what's, what's required per code. I tried to just send him a text. I do know he said that a bathroom would be required. So because there's people, public coming in and paying for a service inside of a building, they do have to provide a bathroom. And I'm, I'm guessing it probably has to meet like commercial building code. I mean, it's a small building, so that may not mean a lot, but it probably has to meet commercial building code. I don't know if it's, if it can be a slab-on-grade or not.
Yeah, it seems to me that it makes sense that, I think this is a great idea. I think the questions about the building, the structure and all that are fair. But if we start with the concept and see if we think the conceptual framework of having golf simulators, you know, subject to approval of whether they should be on slab or whatever, that would be where I would start. I think it's a good idea. I don't know if your intent was to have cross-marketing. I think it's a really good cross-marketing idea for a financial services business for both current clients and potential new clients who might come to golf, and you'd market to them that, you know, if you're looking for financial assistance, you can provide that. So, and I think it's a good fit for the city, because there's not something like that around, and people, you know, working at the New Grain can walk over for lunch or break or, and, and hit some golf balls. So I think, I applaud you for the idea and the concept, I think it's a great one. I think, you know, the devil's in the details in terms of building and what, what the fit should be in Della Field, but I think the concept is a good one. I am curious if there is an idea of cross-marketing behind it, because that's the first thing that occurred to me, that it was smart.
Not, not necessarily. I mean, it's, I guess, would be a second order of fact perhaps, but it's not, not the main impetus. I would say, I mean, we are, we are golfers and golf enthusiasts, and, but I, I think that there, you know, in the golf simulator business has, you know, been expanding over, in recent years, but it's, I think what we're talking about here and seeking feedback on is a little bit different than the type of venues that have sprung up over the last five or ten years that are, you know, I would class, I don't know what the technical definition would be, but much more, you know, large-scale entertainment in terms of, you know, full food menu or, you know, we don't have it, you know, that's, that's obviously not what we're discussing here. We're more pure, just, you know, providing a place for the community primarily in the wintertime, which is long around here to be able to, you know, access a golf simulator. And so that, that's the, that's the main idea and how it interacts with the business. It's already, you know, on the, on the, on the property, you know, maybe that'll have some cross-marketing effect, but...
I think so.
So maybe at a high level, what's your relationship to the owners of the property? Are you gonna rent this land to possibly put this on, or how is that gonna work?
So, well, I am one of the owners of the property. Are you, are you...
Okay.
Are you...
I wasn't sure, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so I am, I do own the property.
Okay.
Myself and one other partner, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so depending upon what, you know, what the feedback is, you know, there'd be some sort of, you know, lease agreement between the entity that owns the building or the, the current property and, you know, this, this simulator entity.
Got it.
A question I have is, I know this is all conceptual and all that, how does it fit in there? You've got a, correct me if, is that a dumpster in back, correct? An enclosed dumpster in the back?
It's not a dumpster, it's just kind of an fenced-off enclosed area, no dumpster there though.
So just looking at your sketchings, mind you, I know it's not scaled out or anything. How is that going to fit in there? And is there any kind of issues with setbacks from this type of a building, structure to the permanent building and that other additional structure to the west?
Yeah, I think that's part of the feedback we're looking for is, you know, the, the renderings that we submitted are, we asked the designer to basically give us the renderings for the smallest that the structure could be and still allow for two bays and a bathroom. And that's what it, that's what we're showing, so the fifty-four feet, so it, go ahead.
By chance, did someone run out there with a tape measure and get an idea of what that span is? I, I'm curious, because, you know, I look at, I look at the pencil line here...
It fits, fifty-four feet fits, depending on what the setbacks are, which I don't, you know...
So they are, they are ten feet on each side, and I had the same concern, and it looks really tight, like it will be really tight. There's a ten-foot setback from, from structure to structure as well. I don't, you'd have to talk to Scott, I don't know if there's any abilities to waive that with fire, specific fire protection standards, but from the lot lines, it is ten feet. And then, and then you also have to be careful with the whole parking lot thing, because you, you can't lose more than... to have.
Yeah, I think that's why I sketched it that way, is because, again, without having it be, you know, the perfect science, knowing that if, if we need to, if we keep the building that size and need to orient it on the, on the property any different way, we're gonna lose much more of those parking spaces, which, you know, we can't do, and I understand, so... Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, from your end of it, I would suggest that it would be a, a good suggestion, would be just go out there with a tape measure and just kinda see what does fit in there. Gives you a start point, at least a known sizes of this, you know, the structure. Will it fit in there or not, to begin with?
We're really talking seventy-four feet then. Ten feet between existing building and this, and ten feet from the back of this to the property line?
Mm-hmm.
It'd be seventy-four feet you need.
Right, right. You know, and...
And then remember, we're gonna wanna see some nice landscaping around this thing as well, so it's aesthetically pleasing, right?
Right, and so, you know, you gotta look at it around the building, not just east-west. You gotta see what's available on there, including on the north side of the structure. So, you know, you have the advantage of having a tape measure in half hour of your time, and you can kind of get an idea of what might fit in there or not.
Right.
So there is, I don't want to get into this too much tonight, but I believe somebody's, a different applicant, might be coming to a future agenda really soon, asking to rezone this area. And what's challenging is, and I don't know if the planning commission is going to support that or not, or common counsel, there is, there is a, there's a pretty significant difference between CBD two and CBD one, and that CBD one does not have any of the setbacks, they don't have the parking requirements, but they also, the permitted uses, so in CBD you can have all of the permitted uses that are allowed in CBD one, but then in CBD one, the conditional uses are a little bit more broader, and entertainment centers are allowed as a conditional use in CBD one, but they're not allowed as a conditional use in CBD two. So depending on the zoning, if it were to switch, that could impact what the applicant can or can't do, which is also something to consider in whether or not you do want to rezone it, is the, the change in what's allowed, but...
Just a follow-up on that, because I'm getting confused on this. It says the property's zone CBD two. All uses in CB...
Permitted.
District are permitted.
Yeah, the permitted uses are, so if you go to the CBD, all of the, there's a long list of permitted uses in CBD one, those are allowed in CBD two. But the conditional uses are separately identified in each district.
And are those permitted uses, is that an example of the hobby shops, private clubs?
Yes.
So...
Those are CBD one permitted uses.
Just since we're talking about it now. So do you think it's the, I think there might be better ways than to just keep adding items to the list every time somebody comes in? Is that what you're suggesting?
No. Certainly, there are codes out there because it's hard to anticipate different uses that are way, that are much more vague, retail office service such as a few items, and then you can decide whether or not it does or doesn't fit. So there are codes written that way. Your code really isn't right now. It's not on the list, we've got a long list of things to do, that's not one of them. So if you were to accept the use, I would recommend you just add, for now, for short-term, otherwise you're getting yourself into a project. Just add golf simulators with a, probably a maximum number of bays, so that it doesn't become too extensive.
Well, some future date where this would be cleaned up, or...
To have, to, well, that hasn't been suggested to this point, but it is certainly something the city can consider. Yeah, you just would want to be careful you don't end up with a Topgolf or something like that downtown Della Field.
Yeah, right, okay.
Oh, I'll just comment, my, my, my impression of, and I love golf, and I've been to about a dozen simulators. I feel like we're really trying to force something that doesn't belong here. The building doesn't look like it fits. The use, there's nothing in CBD one as far as approved use that remotely resembles like recreational activities indoors. The golf simulators that everyone I've been to and, and that, they, you, the interaction and the actual activity is almost exactly like a bowling alley, just shorter. You have a group of people that are waiting their turn. Typically, I mean, especially one this size, I mean, I was just at one in Oconomock the other weekend where we had probably too many people, we had nine people on two bays, but four people is kind of crowded and reasonably sized. We had nine people on two bays, but, um, four people is kind of crowded and reasonably sized simulators, typically you see two people. But, um, you're, you're taking your turn, you're rotating around. Um, this looks pretty tight for that. I know you can do it. This looks more like a hobbyist thing. Like, it's like when I would set up if I was a dentist and put it in my parking lot for myself in the winter between patients probably. But, um, the style of the building, the idea, the first impression is that it does look like a mobile home and it's in the, in and around the historic downtown district. And I don't see a use that resembles, you know, um, arcade or, you know, just in standard uses that's, that are permitted uses in CBD one that translate into this.
Yeah. You almost, you have to go down to the conditional uses.
I know. We'd be going to conditionally, so we'd be looking for, you know, real good reason to do it. Um, I just, at first blush, it just seems like it belongs more like on the edge of, like by Delafield Brew House or near industrial park or where there's more space and parking and, and access to it as opposed to the arts, crafts, services, dining, entertainment. Like entertainment meaning like music and that downtown. So I'd be reluctant to add it as a use in this area. Just my, my first impression of this, at least as much as I love it, I mean, if it, if it ended up getting done, I'd probably use it. But, um, that, those are just my, this is a, your, your first blush at this and that's the feedback I have for you. Um, I, I think, I think to make it look like it fits, that might be more of a budget than you are willing to expend to make it fit in downtown. Everything going in is, um, improving upon buildings that at first blush look like this into something else these days, but.
Tim, I think your point's a valid one on queuing, you know, people tend to queue up. I'm just asking this theoretically, because I think there's solutions to that. But if there were practical solutions that would avoid queuing, you know, car, two cars that come, two would leave. And a half hour later, two cars that come, would you still be, to me, the design of it is a separate discussion. Are you conceptually against it? If the queuing issues were addressed or?
What's that? Not so much the queuing. I'm just saying that that's, um, that we don't have bowling alleys in here now and they've been around forever. Like simulators are relatively new. I mean, there's a reason that, uh, bowling alleys weren't part of the code and the permitted uses in downtown. That's because of whatever the, the activity and the, um, I don't know that it was size or whatever. It's just, it wasn't, wasn't considered as an activity or axe throwing or, you know, whatever else. I mean, there's a lot of different trends going in or, or, I don't know, video, I don't even see video cades, arcades on here as far as a permitted use as by design. And that's kind of what this, this is, this is, this is an interactive entertainment situation. We don't have a venue already established downtown that, um, had, I mean, as close as you can get is maybe like the, the pottery experience, but that's really the arts and craft thing that's really part of the city plan going back to the seventies. I'm just trying to translate this use into what was envisioned long-term and, you know, refreshed over the years. As far as something that, you know, was built in or designed to be a part of downtown.
Yeah. You know, just some feedback, listening to the guys talk is, I think the concern would be, it's a, you know, the economics here is it's a, they kind of crank out these modular homes, right? So you can get a lower entry cost, drop it in and you can make an ROI out of the story, cause you don't, you don't have 10 golfers, you have two. And I think if you think about the downtown, like that's not going to work, right? It's like, it's kind of like aesthetically be plugged right in, look consistent, plenty of space. And that's what I'm kind of hearing. Cause if, if you had a structure like that with only two bays that fit in beautifully, that, I think that could, one person's comment with that, that could pass. Cause it, it's convenient downtown. It's almost like a little mini fitness center, right? Where people could walk at lunch to the fitness center. And this, your first pass, just be careful with modular home slapped on a piece of property. Doesn't look right, right? That's what I'm hearing a little bit.
Yeah. Well, yeah. Thanks for all the comments. I think, you know, that's why we're here. Is this, this thing can be built on a foundation. We don't, and if it needs to be, um, and.
Just because it's on a foundation doesn't make it not modular, mobile home-like. You know, that's, that's what I'm hearing.
I, right. And I, I think Scott, you brought up a good point. I mean, I think we're, if the concept itself is not, not going to pass, no matter what the thing, if, no matter how aesthetically, you know, uniform it looks with the rest of the city, then, you know, that's what we need to hear. But, but.
I think if it's, it's only two bays and it really fits nicely, I don't, it doesn't feel bowling alley, Topgolf, right? It almost feels like a little small fitness center.
Yeah. Well, they're not, are they on here either? I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, okay, but ID or what's B Fitness?
That's not, is what zoning is that?
That's, um, CBD three.
We created that one.
It's a planned development.
I mean, you know, we could argue, okay, B Fitness is analogous to Curves, which fits in a strip mall, which isn't what we're looking for either. So I guess, I, I'm not taking one side or the other. I'm just, I'm looking for consistency.
Uh, I'm really looking at for the, just the pure, like I said, the, from a feedback standpoint, we'd be adding a use here that's breaking ground into an area that's never been considered. Like health clubs, recreation centric, you know, like, you know, a wall climbing studio could be put in the new, new building too. You know, it's like, there's lots of things we could add, which is why haven't we to date ever done that? We need to examine that before we just say, I like this idea and add it to, you know, like Scott's point, another, you know, list that goes, that's a BL right now. So we go to BM and then BN. Like we're, we're creating an interesting kind of parabola of different, you know, armea shape things that contain. I don't know. My, I'm, that's, I'm just trying to make the point like we're, where's the focus or the, the vision consistent with what the plan is for downtown is what I'm trying to find out.
I'd have to agree with you.
I'd, yeah.
Yeah. I just, I, I get your points where it's not a bowling alley. I think, I guess the way I would think about it, they're not going to do this, but if they're going to level that lot and build their financial business from scratch and put two or three golf simulators in it, which I think has a real tie-in to your business. I do. I, I don't see how that sticks out like a sore thumb in the city of Delafield. I think it's creative. I think it's different. And I think it's, you know, it's not a, you know, a, a 10-lane bowling alley or a huge golf simula- simulator. But, you know, that's, we can agree to disagree. So.
Yeah. I, we appreciate all of the comments certainly, and that we're looking to understand and have this conversation. And, you know, making it more fit, fit better with the rest of the downtown area. Uh, certainly can hear that and wanted, if the question is around the use in particular versus if it's a full foundation, not a modular structure dropped on, uh, you know, if it's a second, second structure on the site. That was kind of the other question we had was in regards to the, if it's, if it is that modular dropped on, feels like a mobile home. That doesn't look great aesthetically versus if we dig a foundation and just put a whole new building, same concept, same use. Uh, but would fit in with the whole surrounding area better. So we, we can.
You do need, Scott just replied, you do need foundation and footings.
Okay.
But Tim, your point, the point you're making is you, even with the best design and only two bays, you're opening up a, an avenue of a lot of different things that could.
I'm just bringing that up as a, as a point. Um, but you know, and this, to Scott's point, if it's an adjunct used into something that's there and he, it's like, hey, it, it's in a building that fits in. Like if, I, what just came to mind is if Wheel and Sprocket said, um, hey, there's this new thing and it's probably not new, but we have a simulator, a bicycle riding simulator where you can come in and, you know, you can, you know, you can participate in the Tour de France live, you know, and you have two bays and you pay X amount of dollars per hour. Who, why would we, why would we stand in the way of that? You know, so, um, there's, I think there's room to make this, make this work, but the, the big thing has got to, it's got to look right. It's going to fit in.
So yeah, your appeal on a couple of things. One is just the use. Obviously we're not agreeing on that because it's something different. Number two, I think, I know I am averse to just adding another building in there. So it's, not only is it kind of stacked against you just using a modular look, which you're okay with that. But, you know, boy, you start building additional buildings or just outbuildings and stuff, it gets junky really quick and we're really trying to avoid that.
Right.
So that's obviously a hang up, I think in general. And then making sure that, you know, and we would assume, but you have to ask, obviously the appearance has to be good.
Sure. Yeah.
Have you considered or you looked into putting an addition on your current building? As opposed to a separate building? Because I, for one, I'm not a fan of thinking the idea that it's a trailer park back there. Cause ultimately it's, it's a temporary building of some sort, you know, in that manner. But now if it has to have a, a permanent foundation, it's different. It's like a prefab being plugged in there. But setbacks and all these things playing, playing it. But since you own the building and the property, have you thought about maybe, or would consider looking into that as an option? Instead of having a separate building back there, tie it into your current building and just have it, you know, going west out of, out of that side?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah. It's a good, it's a good point. It's not something we've looked at super carefully, but it's definitely something to think about. Yeah.
Just a thought. That's all.
So Ed and Dan, I, if you've said it, I, I didn't hear it. I just want to make sure the applicant gets some clear direction on the simulator use being two or four bays. Is that something?
I, I'm not personally, I'm not.
Something you could go along with if all the other things made sense? So just specifically on the use of two to four simulators in downtown.
It would be no more than two bay, cause you could see into what Tim was talking about. Now we've got four lanes and.
Okay. So two bays.
Two bay. Uh, yeah. You want to get to.
Does that seem something they should pursue or something you're not sure?
Well, wouldn't zoning kind of take care of that? If this gets bigger, they're taking more parking spaces, the setbacks?
Yeah. But I would, if you're going to build it into as a text amendment to the code, then it's going to apply to all properties.
Well, that I get. Yeah. Right.
I think I'm just trying to get clarification for them on the simulator idea.
On, on the idea of a simulator, I'm not against it.
Okay.
I, what I, what I'm not a fan of is the setting of, of where this, how this is put in there. Because personally, I think, you know, you can plug a simulator into this room, put 12 of them in, into, into here, and now you've got it. No one outside, aside from the sign, knows that's going on. So it's, it's no harm. So it's a business that's being run. So the, so all we're looking at here is really the confines of the outside. That's got the bigger flag there. I'm not against having someone saying, hey, I gotta, I want to put a business in here and it's going to be a golf simulator. I mean, I got nothing against golfing. I cut putter heads at.
To your, to your points earlier too, and I'll, I, same as Tim, I go to golf simulators, I go to tap-in. What else is part of that? Like what else is part of a bowling alley? A bar. They're not asking for a bar. Food. Okay. We talked about that too. It's not, I, it's the same function, but it's different.
Mm-hmm.
So I, and maybe it's splitting hairs, but just, I, I wouldn't anticipate the issues of something like this versus a full-blown, you know, they've got a bar and a restaurant and everything else. And this is just entertainment to feed other part, other parts of entertainment. This is a little bit different.
And Dan, do you have a comment on simulators one way or the other?
Me or that Dan? Me?
Yeah, you.
Okay. No, I really don't. I, I'm more, my problem is with the mobile home trailer. And I know some of these, if you go in a mobile home park, they say it's on a foundation. It's a concrete slab that, but the trailer still has the tires on it. And they put skirting around it. So it can be taken, when I say foundation, I mean, like a prefab thing that's dropped on a foundation. No tires, not a trailer.
Yeah. No to the guys, no wheels. All right.
Agreed.
So I think you got a majority that says simulators are okay too, but you got a lot of work to do on the structure, location and aesthetics if you want to move forward.
I would definitely advise talking with Scott or a building inspector.
And, and.
Talk to him about what you're going to be allowed from a building standpoint.
Right.
And to Ed's, Sam, uh, comment earlier, and I don't know enough about this, but if it were attached to the building, maybe it eliminates the bathroom requirement, in which case you, you know, you have a room to work with.
Yeah. And I guess, Ed, to your point, you said, you know, have you thought about adding on to the existing building? And, you know, if we were coming here with that con- concept instead of, hey, we're going to do this addition that is that aesthetically looks right and is, fits the setbacks. And by the way, there's going to be, the purpose of the, of the addition is to put two simulators within the confines of the building. You know, maybe the, I guess that get, that gets at the core of, is this a use issue or is it more a structure and an aesthetic issue? Uh, because it sounds like that would, you know, we'd be facing fewer headwinds if that was the direction we wanted to go.
For me, structure and, and aesthetics, that's the bigger part of what you're, you're, you're presenting at least here. Like I said, I'm not against the idea of, of a golf simulator for a business, you know, and I, and I guarantee it, there's a place for it. So.
Yeah.
You know, if Clearwater Outdoors wants to put in a kayak simulator. I'm just saying. Yeah. There's clearly, there's clearly, based on footprint and other things. I mean, it certainly can belong, right?
That's what I'm hearing from a lot of people is it's structure and fit as opposed to use.
Yeah. And then just know this is one body, because it's a text amendment, it does also have to go to common council. So you'll have three months of, to get through a text amendment and then you bring it back for the actual structure. But you can bring the structure in conceptually, I think, through that process.
Yeah. You can run a dual path on that.
What's the, uh, the parking and, you know, how, if we did an addition, we for sure would be eating into parking. So how do we, is there a ratio or how does that work? That seems to be the issue that you have raised in the past.
Believe, I don't know if I wrote it down, but I believe both of these uses are one space per 250 square feet. Did I write that? I didn't put that in there exactly.
You do have it in there, Amy.
Do I?
Yeah.
So we can confirm that, but I believe it's one space per 250 square feet. I, I decide, determined.
You said it can accommodate approximately nine to 10 spaces. It appears the site has 12 parking spaces.
Yeah.
So that would be the readditional.
Yeah. I mean, but it depends. If he does an addition, if you change the size, you know, I would go off of that. Um, I can ver, I can confirm that with you. Um, and, you know, I, you do need to have a survey. I do think you're, you probably aren't going to meet the setbacks once you lay this out on a survey to scale. And, um, you might, but you have room to move parking around a little bit maybe. Um.
I think you could get another forest spots out of there just on the cursory look of it.
Right. Yeah.
So whether it's attached or detached, it doesn't matter. It's based on square feet.
Okay. And that potential rezone you talked about, would that make that ratio higher or lower? Which direction does that take it?
Text amendment would be specific to allowing golf simulators.
No, you, you mentioned something about there's a potential that it, that parcel is going to be.
Oh, I'm sorry. CBD one.
Don't even bank on that.
Well, it might be presented.
You need to focus on what you're doing.
Yeah. Well, the thing is.
You don't want to wait for somebody else who may or may not do something.
No, but it might come to the next meeting, which would be in line with what you're proposing and it may impact, ultimately impact your property. So that, that may come in, um, actually, yes, I believe it's being presented in March, actually. They applied for it. So.
It's a whole nother best.
If you're willing to wait, I mean, if you're willing to wait, maybe you just listen to that meeting first before you invest more.
Yeah. So, yeah. So I guess I was just asking, not banking on it by any means, but does that mean we would need more parking or less if that happened?
Oh.
It doesn't, oh.
Based on the rezone?
Per the ordinance in CBD one, less. I will say that the city, that's probably going to be the, a, a concern about rezoning it. And so there, you know, maybe, maybe park, I don't know, because maybe they have parking provisions.
Right.
Maybe they'll modify that. I don't, I don't know.
Sounds good.
I would say not more, not more. Um, the, the parking standard that was one per 250, that's just a standard provision. CBD one is the only exception where parking's not required.
Appreciate all the feedback.
Yeah. Thank you.
Helpful conversation. Thank you.
Yeah. Good conversation. Thanks for bringing up the idea.
Thanks for your time.
You got everyone here to talk, so that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We will move on to item number 11, comprehensive plan, zoning and ordinance revisions. A discussion and poss, discussion and provide feedback on potential schedule, a public hearing on the amendment to article seven of chapter 52, City of Delafield zoning ordinance regarding non-conforming uses, structures, lots and permits issued prior to this chapter. Amy.
Okay. So we talked about this last month. Um, we decided to, you decided to, um, add the term equalized to determining the value of structures that have a non-conforming use. So all I did, I was, I added the word equal, equalized. I removed the section 52, 198 for abolishment. since those provisions were identified elsewhere, and then under the non-conforming characteristics of the residential structures, we had talked about four options, the recommended option was number three, so my intent was to match your discussion as much as I could, I've got a typo in here for, first of all, but we'll fix that, so the way it's written is that pursuant to Section 62-237 HB, so that is a statute of the Wisconsin statutes, a non-conforming structure may be repaired, maintained, renovated, and remodeled, if the structure contains a permitted use that existed on the effective date of this ordinance and provided all provisions of the floodplain ordinance are complied with, so that, those are statutory elements, there's really not a whole lot you can do unless you don't like the way it's worded, and then, and then we would add another statement that would say lateral and vertical additions may also be permitted if the addition complies with all dimensional standards of the zoning district and provided the floor area and open space requirements are not further impacted if non-conforming, if the non-conforming structure is on a non-conforming lot, the provisions of Section 52-199 apply, so there's a whole long section on some allowances that can be provided for non-conforming lots, does that make sense, so the idea, I believe what you said last meeting is additions would be allowed, but they have to, the additions themselves have to comply.
An additional is your typo?
Yes, additional is the typo, and then addition, and then the other thing, I want to make sure, I'll talk to Michael about this, the city attorney, I want to make sure I'm not implying that that whole paragraph is pursuant to the statute, because it's not, it's just the first half is, so I might have to have two separate sections, so what I would do is, if you're okay with the language generally speaking, I would draft ordinance language for a public hearing for March and have the city attorney take a quick look at it before it gets presented and published.
Looks good to me.
Any questions?
Yeah, I would motion to set a public hearing next March.
I'll second.
And if you find a tweak between now and then, you know, you can, we can have further discussions during the public hearing since you're the applicant.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Okay, move on to 11B, discussion and provide feedback and potentially schedule a public hearing on request by the Lake Welfare Committee to amend 52-25 of Chapter 52 of the Delphill zoning ordinance regarding boathouses.
Okay, so this one, the Lake Welfare Committee has been discussing proposed amendments to the boathouse provisions to help clearly identify expectations when boathouses come in, rather than leaving it up to discretionary review, so I did provide a redline version of their recommendations, which were presented formally at their meeting this past month, and they did unanimously recommend that Plan Commission move forward with the recommendations as presented in this report, so since you have not seen this previously, I am just going to go over some of these changes, so one of them would be that boathouses cannot contain any interior walls or separate rooms, and that they have to contain a large garage-type door, that, that's where it kind of stops right now in the definition section, it would say, contain a large garage-type door for primary access on the side of the building facing the water, which shall consist of overhead retractable doors with no more than 25% transparent windows, and then instead of just saying that boathouses may be allowed in the floodplain, it's saying if any portion of the boathouse is located within the regulated floodplain, the provisions of Chapter 16 floodplain zoning shall be complied with, so at the city level, we don't forget that there's another ordinance, and then the other big one is that, right now, you only have to have the rainwater remediation device if you're building a new boathouse, or you're affecting more than 50% of the structural area of the boathouse, Lake Welfare is recommending that all boathouse improvements require that, so for example, the application that was in here tonight for the siding and shingles, that would require, most people put in a rain garden, that would require a rain garden. Then habitation prohibited, in order to help control that a little bit more, rather than just prohibiting bathroom facilities, it's also prohibiting heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and hot water, and then plumbing is limited to one hose bib, and no other plumbing fixtures are permitted, and that electricity is limited to 110 volt, 20 amp service, lighting shall comply with the standards of Section 52-27, which is a lighting section of the code, and that all lighting shall be downward, full, cut-off, and shielded, and lighting shall be turned off by 10:00 PM each night, I will say there was a little discussion on this, there was some discussion about anglers needing to be able to see as they come in and out late at night, but then, Lake Welfare also decided, well, anglers have their own kind of lighting fixtures, and they should be able to get in and out just fine on their own, and that, you know, it may be hard to enforce because staff isn't out late at night, but it's really more of a complaint-driven, if somebody has an obnoxious light, or it's, becomes a nuisance, then it would be enforced on a complaint basis, and then there would be the ability for it to be enforced.
So, does this apply to existing boathouses then, that lighting has to be turned off by 10:00 PM on existing boathouses, or is this on the construction of new ones?
That's a really good question, I would, so typically with zoning in general, when something is in a zoning code, we can verify this with the city attorney, if something existed as a use or structure, it is legal non-conforming prior to an amendment, you can't typically take something away from.
Was that discussed, Mike, at your meeting?
The intent was anything new.
Anything new?
New, meaning a change, too.
Yeah.
In other words, we can't...
A remodel or something.
Like Amy said, we went back and forth on the 10:00 PM thing, thinking, you know, again, we can't enforce it, but at least some idea that we're...
Complaint-based.
Yeah, we're trying to reduce the amount of light on the lake.
As long as it's downlighting, you're probably not going to get any complaints. It's when you have the spotlight that you can see on the other side of the lake.
I'm one of those guys.
It's on at 2:00 AM, this is what the complaint comes from.
I do fish till 11:00 or midnight at our lake home, and I do understand the need to see that boathouse as you're coming in, but I, I get the intent is complaint-driven.
And then, and then the required approvals, it's just cleaning up the approval process a little bit, so right now, instead of it going to the building inspector specifically, it's, it's just saying city, we have an informal policy in place, and that consideration be given by Plan, Lake Welfare and Plan Commission with the same consideration, so the current ordinance says Lake Welfare gives a recommendation to Plan Commission, and then Plan Commission must consider this long list, it doesn't say what Lake Welfare's role is in the process, so right now, really, you both have a similar role, it's just Lake Welfare's is a recommendation, and then in the definition section, I just removed the large garage-type doors from it in order to eliminate duplication, because over time, that results in inconsistencies when you change one section and forget to change the other, so to make sure we don't forget about the boathouse provisions, we just made a reference to the 52-25 section, which has that verbiage in it.
I have a question, first, I think this is going to go a long way to avoid the confusion we've had in the past.
We sure hope so.
So, I think you've, your committee did a really nice job, the question I have is really on enforcement, I mean, rumor has it that, you know, well, we know of several examples of boathouses built out against the current code, rumor has it, some of them just, yeah, so I'm going to keep doing it, and I'm just curious what the city's position or tradition or in terms of enforcement, somebody does something that this committee told them they shouldn't do, and they do it anyway.
Well, I think moving forward, this code helps to clarify some of those things that I think prior Lake Welfare committees thought were evident in how the code was written, things like to be used specifically for boat and boat uses, a pool table doesn't apply, right? Now, how, without saying no pool tables, you know, I think these types of changes that they've put in here helps clarify that for applicants that are reading it.
But what about a door, you know, we've had some door issues.
Yeah, so that's why the word verbiage is cleaned up on the door.
But they do it anyway.
So right now, like, if it's in here, if somebody were to violate this, that's in violation of, of the ordinance, and it is enforceable.
So citations can be written, fees can be levied, and it's, you know, typically, everything in the city, not just boathouses or lights or doors, are complaint-driven, but when the city identifies it during the building construction process, you know, that's not a complaint, that's a violation of the code and ordinance, and it's up to the city to compile a record to make sure that they have the data and facts, so that then they can, you know, issue a citation and defend it in court.
Yeah. Yeah, the one part that always scared me about this was the habitation, because I know in the past years, there were people on Milwaukee Street that used that boathouse for their in-laws.
And there's someone that are grandfathered in with that use already.
Yeah, but that scares me, because what if there's a fire, how does the fire department know there's people down there?
Yeah, so there, there are existing legal non-conforming resident, living situations in boathouses, that is true, the people using boathouses for entertainment purposes is not a city-only, I mean, that's a problem statewide, that's, it's a tough one to manage, and a tough one to enforce, because use is, you know, is it used for this or that, and is it a fish cleaning sink or a bar?
I think as time has gone on, too, we've seen more people with more money coming in, dealing with these houses, and for whatever reason, feel like they can get away with whatever they want, we even, in front of Lake Welfare, we had a well-respected builder just come up and say, that's what they do, they follow the, they do everything they can within the code, get a building inspection passed, and they go to town rebuilding the inside of the boathouse, you know, how do we stop that, and this is the best way we come up with.
Well, somebody's got to report it, and you got to, you got to start finding people.
So I think the idea here was to, obviously, understanding exactly what's inside the boathouse can be difficult, but lowering the amount of electricity, the type of plumbing, those are all things that really should help, only having one room available, having limited light through that overhead door, it just helps, it's not perfect, but it helps probably a lot.
Does Scott, I mean, I was just thinking about a boathouse versus a home, you can't move into a newly-built home until you get an occupancy permit, is there something similar to a boathouse, because it's not being occupied, but would Scott go back after he's issued a permit and look at it?
He verifies the rain gardens there.
There's a final inspection.
But would he go inside to see if, you know, you're not supposed to have a toilet over here, and that sort of thing?
Yeah, as part of his, well, as part of a final inspection, yes, what they do after a final inspection, you know, is...
Quite frankly, the same thing can happen to a house.
Agree, I'm just curious.
We know it does, yep.
If we had the same kind of criteria involved in checks and balances, yeah, if people want to try enough, they can, you know, people rob banks, not supposed to do that, so.
Well...
I think it's definitely a step in the right direction.
Yeah, no, I agree.
It is a step in the right direction, but I know the communities around us come down really hard on people, they can make them rip it out, start all over.
This gives us a much better position, Laura, to deal with it, whereas before, we knew what the intent was of the code, but it didn't, it's, now it's, now it's verbatim, so it gives us a much better opportunity to really enforce what we're looking for.
Yeah, just have to be good neighbors to report.
Tough to legislate.
Parties going on, that shouldn't be going on in a boathouse.
I mean, some of the neighbors enjoy those parties.
Yeah, I know, but no, no.
Well, the next time, we're not invited. Report it.
This is all new to me, because as a kid, it was for boats, that's it.
Unless you own changes, then let me know those.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion, did I miss it, am I forgetting it?
I would make a motion to put the boathouse renovation code on the public hearing for March.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, passes. Okay, we'll move on to 12, reports of city officials, refer you to any correspondence in the packet, planner?
Nothing.
Building inspector? Nothing. Number 13, planning commission, meeting dates and deadlines, a regular meeting, March 20th, 2024, regular meeting submental deadline is February 21st, 2024. All right, seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 8:35.